Let the record show at 6:00, we call a meeting to order. Sarah, will you do the roll call, please?
Ms. Whitaker?
Here.
Ms. Barnhart?
Present.
Eric Gall?
Present.
Ms. Lewis?
Present.
Ms. Moore?
Present.
Ms. Norten?
Here.
Ms. Bush?
Here.
Ms. Schuch?
Okay, we have a quorum. First item is to approve the agenda. No changes that I'm aware of, so I need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Whitaker to approve the agenda. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Norton. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the agenda's approved. Do we have anyone that signed up to speak under the Sunshine Law? No? Okay, records show no one to speak there. Approval of the meeting minutes. Those have been sent to you, I guess, last week, one day.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Bush to approve the meeting minutes. Second by Ms. Norton. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We have four public hearings this evening. First one is Overlook at Riverside.
This public hearing's a request for final plat approval. The project is Overlook at Riverside, Phase 7, Lot 78 through 112, 222 through 229, 244 through 251, and 289 through 305. The file's 2405-124, and the developer is Roth's Family Limited Partnership, and the engineer is Frederick Seibert and Associates. It's located in the Falling Waters District, Tax Map 7, Parcel 160.3. The property is located on the east side of Williamsport Pike and south of I-81. This final plat proposes 51 townhome lots and 17 single-family lots on 8.87 acres to be served by public water and sewer. The final plat meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance, therefore staff recommends final plat approval contingent upon receipt of a surety in the amount of $634,440 even. Plat to be released upon receipt of surety.
Thank you. Do we have anyone to represent the project?
Trevor Frederick, engineer, FSA.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. It's your opportunity to make your comments known. If you have those, please come forward and give us your name, your address, and any comments you might have regarding this project.
Hearing now, Madam President, make a motion to close public hearing.
Okay, with no comments, we have a motion by Mr. Bush, second by Ms. Norton, to close public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is now closed. Planning Commission members, how about you? Do you have questions of the applicants, representative, or of the staff?
If there aren't any, a move accepts staff recommendation. The final plat meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance, and staff recommends the final plat approval contingent upon receipt of surety in the amount of $634,440.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Whitaker.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lewis to accept staff recommendation, and that is to grant final plat approval contingent upon receipt of surety in the amount of $634,440. Are any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. The next public hearing is Cardinal Point.
This is a public hearing for a request for final plat approval. The project is Cardinal Point, Section 6, Lots 480 through 503, 528 through 551, 576 through 587, and 612 through 637. The file's 2405-129, and the developer is Panhandle Homes. The engineer is Fox and Associates. It's located in the Falling Waters District, Tax Map 9, Parcel 11.7, and is located on the north side of Hammond's Mill Road, west of St. Andrews Drive. This final plat proposes 72 townhouse lots and 14 villa lots on 10.69 acres to be served by public water and sewer. The final plat meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance, therefore staff recommends final plat approval contingent upon receipt of a surety in the amount of $1,199,412.42. Plat to be released upon receipt of surety.
Okay, do we have anyone to represent the project?
Good evening. Steve Sianovich with Fox and Associates, representing the applicant.
Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing regarding Cardinal Point, Section 6, with the lots that have been mentioned. If you have questions or comments, now's your opportunity to make those known. Let the record show that there's no one to speak from the public.
Motion to close public hearing.
Motion by Mr. Bush to close public hearing.
Second.
Second by Mr. Whitaker. Are there any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is now closed. How about you, planning commission members? Do you have questions of Mr. Sianovich or of the staff?
There are no questions. I make a motion. Grant final plat approval contingent upon receipt of surety in the amount of $1,199,412.42 with plat to be released upon receipt of surety.
I have a motion by Mr. Lewis.
Second.
Second by Mr. Whitaker. That is to approve the final plat for Cardinal Point, Section 6, with lots mentioned. Final plat will have surety in the amount of $1,199,412.42. Is there any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You got it.
Thank you.
Okay, the next one, public hearing, is Lot 4, Hensel Heights.
This public hearing's a request for waiver. The project is Lot 4, Hensel Heights, filed 2406-175. The developers Patricia Timbrook and the engineer is Fox and Associates. It's located in the Falling Waters District, Tax Map 17, Parcel 97, and is located on the northwest corner of the intersection of Anderson Road and Powell Lane in the Hensel Heights subdivision. The developers proposing the creation of Lot 4A, which is .44 acres, Lot 4B, which is 0.39 acres, and Lot 4, which is 0.75 acres. Lots 4A and 4B will be served by public water and sewer, and Lot 4 is currently improved with a single-family residence, which is served by public water and sewer. The developers requesting a waiver to Section 305.4.1 of the Berkeley County subdivision ordinance requiring a two-acre minimum lot size and WV DOH road frontage in order to proceed through the preliminary final process. Since the proposed lots will be served by public water and sewer, staff recommends approval of the waiver request to Section 305.4.1.
Do we have anyone to represent the project?
Steve Sianovich with Fox and Associates, representing the applicant.
Thank you. Okay, this is a public hearing. If you have questions or comments regarding this project, now's your opportunity to make those known.
I oppose that subdivision of that lot.
I'm sorry, you want?
My name is Steve Robinson. I live at 124 Anderson Road. I live across the street from this residence.
Okay. And you're opposing it?
I am opposing it.
Do you want to give a reason?
Well, during the rainy season, which I know we haven't had, or a heavy winter, there's standing water on this lot all the time, and it takes days for that water to resign or subside. So for that reason, I'm opposing this.
Okay.
Would you like to see the pictures?
Sure.
That's the front lot that he's wanted to subdivide. Heavy rains, it looks like a lake a lot of times.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak regarding this project? You want to come forward, please, and give us your name? I'm sorry, you'll have to cut closer to the microphone so we can hear you.
My name's Frank Shepherd. I'm vice president of the Homeowners Association.
Okay.
I grew up there as a kid. I stood there and caught the bus as a corner. There used to be a pond there, and then that was the lake where they wanted to put the lots at. But man, across from it, before he built the place, he built in the pond. There's another pond that drains into it. There's a clear swath, five feet wide, that runs out of the pond that fills up that area. And it's just the people who built some lots across the street prior, and they're always flooded out diagonally across the street. This place lays in water. Just fill for the people who's going to live there because they're going to see some rain or a flash flood, or just going to be flooded out. I realized that with mobile homes, like up at 7-Eleven down there, they're allowed to have water to put people all around a mobile home. And there is mobile homes where the water stands across the street, but they were going to build a stick-built home there. Now, they could be really, I could see putting mobile homes there, they're allowed to have water up two feet around them. I guess more, it's like that at the 7-Eleven at Hurley Station. But these people here, I didn't think you could do that, build a stick-built home and have it right there where it's going to lay in the lake. I know you can do it with mobile homes, but I didn't think you could do it with them. That's all I'm saying. That's on his behalf. It's always been a lake there. I used to say, I caught the bus there as a kid, and it's always, I lived on that lane, that end of the lane that they're on, like.
Does the covenants of the subdivision retain everywhere in the subdivision?
Uh, Mr. Legal? You didn't bring those with you this evening?
I did not bring them with me.
Okay.
There's a 50-foot rule. You have to be 50 foot off the road for buildings, maybe 25 foot from the boundary line. And it almost sounded like you're trying to subdivide that into three lots. Is that correct?
I'd be happy to follow your question.
Oh, okay. Yeah. So with that being said, I don't think there's enough room to build anything on.
Okay.
You follow the covenants.
Okay. Anybody else wish to speak regarding this project? Okay. Mr. Delagotti, are you looking for the covenants? Okay. Mr. Sianovich, you want to try to address the concerns here of Mr. Robinson and Mr. Shepherd?
Okay, so I don't clarify. I guess first I'd like to speak to the lake issue or the water ponding on the property. In your planning commission packet, we included an exhibit that does depict the location of the dwellings that are proposed there. I did receive the architecture for the dwellings, and these gentlemen that spoke are correct. It is a stick-built, split foyer type of dwelling they proposed to build on each of these lots. Our exhibit includes a grading plan. We are very sensitive to, you know, years ago, we didn't really include, or sometimes organizations or government didn't require grading plans or first floor elevations established for a dwelling. I know over the years, you've had many people before this commission talking about, you know, my house is too low. Every time it rains, I get water in my basement, all that kind of stuff. But we've been diligent the last, I don't know, 20, 25 years, trying to establish first floor elevations of these dwellings, grade these dwellings, so they're high and dry. There's a lot of grading activities that are proposed on this lot in order to kind of fill in and get positive drainage through the lot to eliminate any ponding that you may see or may be exhibited in the photographs. Sure, sure.
I mean, all this grading was done according to state farmers and inspections, but we had to rooftop. And we all threw those quadrants and all that stuff.
No, we're not proposing to do any of that. I'd be happy to share a copy of my exhibit with you after this meeting to show you where the ponds are proposed. And I go back to another comment that was made. If you look at the tax records for that, this general area, I think a lot of people over the years have had larger lots and then cut a lot or two off. And from what I understand, I don't know if there's a financial hardship here with the current owner, but I think they were trying to kind of create a little bit of revenue here, like others have in the community, to create additional building lots. I'm just sharing.
They're trying to make money. You also make money some of the things, right?
Well, that's, I don't know how else to comment, but I, now, the other comment you had, the covenants and restrictions, I'll be honest with you, I didn't look at them. At this point, we're here tonight for a waiver request to be permitted to use the preliminary final plat process, and given what Laura had read, staff is recommending that process to be considered by this planning commission. This is compliant with the subdivision regulations in terms of lot size, setback, and everything else. We do have the houses placed, and I realize it's tough to see on this exhibit. I didn't bring a full scale, but we have the houses placed pretty far back from the road. I do not know, I did not personally read the covenants and restrictions, but if there is something in there, and if the covenants and restrictions would trump the subdivision regulations, we could certainly make an adjustment to the house placement in order to abide by those covenants and restrictions.
Do you know how long those covenants and restrictions have been in place?
I've been there 47 years, been there since I've been there.
And you pay into the Homeowners Association?
I do, yeah.
Have any luck, Mr. Delagotti?
Evidence were recorded in August of 1972. Generally, what staff here does with covenants and restrictions is actual concrete. I like to copy. Take a look at it, what's on here, what process it should do. And I'll just clarify, this was submitted on August 1st. This was through our administrative subdivision plat, where it wouldn't even come before approval based on the lot sizes. We opposed the information that we gave you today for the waivers, just for the process. We haven't even worked with a plat delivery or any, like, potential wetland areas or anything like that. So obviously, we would take a look at those and have requirements made. So, but that has, haven't even looked at that because it hasn't been submitted, that's what the waiver.
Well, I guess I might have a question. If we grant this waiver tonight, then who takes over to see that it's in compliance with the development process for grading and so forth? You do that?
Well, we still have to submit, assuming that we have a favorable response to this waiver request, we would prepare a preliminary final plat. That would be before you for approval.
Okay.
It's not like it's not. Under the current, under the Regulation A, on August 1st regulation, first point, wouldn't come back.
A wetland, it would never wear, it was more of a blue flag than where it's all.
I did take a look at the national wetland. Doesn't mean they don't exist, but also when you look at the soils types there, they aren't soil types that are typically found in wetland areas. Just because, you know, through grading activities, if water bonded there over the years, doesn't necessarily mean that it's a wetland area, there's a bunch of components. Hydrology's one of them, don't get me wrong, it has to be wet.
I would see this individually. That's my judgment. Wetlands, they would not even bother with. Rec connection to waters, or as drainage, as long as they could demonstrate, like, they're coming, they're right, of the floodwater. It's like all those.
And all that information will be submitted to you prior to?
Okay.
Any further questions, commission members?
I have a question for Mr. Shepherd. You're vice president of the Hensel Heights Homeowners Association?
Yes, sir.
And are you speaking on behalf of the Homeowners Association, or are you speaking as an individual? The reason why I ask the question is that part of this application assumes that the HOA will be in favor of declaring these two lots as part of the subdivision.
Board members were for it, there wasn't a meeting called, and we all, the whole association.
Understood, so.
There's no vote put in the flag.
Understood.
The board, the board members.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
Any further?
May I ask a question of each gentleman?
Go ahead.
For the President.
We've been trying to get in contact with the Road Association. Has the Northside anything contacted? Only he emailed you.
I have heard.
Thank you. The reason I ask that question, I expressed, you know, my concerns to my client, that this is a, the other part of the waiver was to not have DOH frontage. So I think with the preliminary plan, or excuse me, the preliminary final plat submittal, should we have a favorable ruling this evening, one of the prerequisite requirements for staff to recommend approval of that would be an approval letter from the roadway association. I believe, is the roadway association separate from the homeowners association?
Sure, it's all a road. Back years ago, we tried to get our roads paid by the state. They told us over and over again, every year, that they don't have to many orders of roads. They all paid for our road frontage. So if we get a private, private development, a road association, or an HOA, which was no removing one road.
Understood. Thank you.
Part of our requirements would be that either way, accept those new lots into the association, or if they provide a letter saying that they don't need to be part of the association, but they have to have some type of approval from the HOA to be able to create those lots.
In my opinion, they should be, I'm just thinking out loud, welcomed to the association because there would be additional dues paid. I'm not sure it'd be really fair to create these two lots.
I doubt that's right.
Still, something's better than.
$300 of a year for a resident.
I don't know, I'm just looking at really whatever the road association wants.
That's, that is going to get more money than the road association. I don't see that either.
Any further questions?
Madam President, I'll go ahead and offer the motion to close the public hearing section.
Thank you. Motion by Mr. Bush to close public hearing, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lewis. Any further questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is now closed. Okay, planning commission members, do you have questions of Mr. Sianovich or of the two representatives from the Hensel Heights subdivision?
Madam President, hearing now to make a motion to grant waiver request to Section 305.4.1 per staff recommendation.
I have a motion by Mr. Bush. Second by Mr. Lewis. Any further questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
It's up to you guys to make sure that this happens, and to the staff.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next public hearing is Rankin Fitness Center.
Yes, this is a request for sketch plan advancement. The project is Rankin Fitness Center. The file number is 2404-098. The developer is Rankin and Associates LLC. The engineer is Fox and Associates. Excuse me, it's located in the Falling Waters District, Map 14, Parcel 73. This site is located on the west side of TJ Jackson Drive between Akron Drive and Safran Terrace. The developer is proposing a 12,076-square-foot fitness center on 1.29 acres to be served by public water and sewer. No waivers or exceptions have been requested. On June 21st, 2024, County Engineer Doug Smith deemed the above-mentioned project compliant with the subdivision ordinance 2009. The sketch plan meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance, therefore staff recommends advancement of the sketch plan to the preliminary plan stage.
Thank you. Do we have anyone to represent the project?
Steve Sianovich with Fox and Associates, representing the applicant.
Thank you. Okay, this is a public hearing. It's your opportunity to make your comments known regarding Rankin Fitness Center. Come forward, sir, give us your name and address.
My name is Vernon Brenniger, and I live on Safron Terrace, 19 Safron Terrace. And rather obvious to everybody, the growth we're having in northern Berkeley County. See the first two public hearings. I've been, my wife and I have been gym members at One Life, formerly Golz, for 20 years. Of course, we drive to Martinsburg five days a week, and it would be a blessing to have a fitness center in our area. Because I know in our section of Spring Mills, we have a large degree of our neighbors that, whose hair is the same color as mine is, and I think they would probably take advantage of something like that if they didn't have to drive 10 miles to Martinsburg. So I'm super for it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else wish to speak regarding Rankin Fitness Center? Either for or against. This is a public hearing.
No one else to make a motion to close the public hearing?
Okay, let the record show that there is no further comments. I have a motion by Mr. Lewis, second by Mr. Bush, to close public hearing. Is there any questions by the planning commission? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing's now closed. Okay, planning commission members, how about you? Are you ready to go down and join the Rankin Fitness Center?
I think I'm past that.
You're past that.
But I'll move to accept the staff recommendation.
Okay.
And the sketch plat meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance and take the staff's recommendation to, or the preliminary plan stage.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Whitaker.
Second.
To accept the staff recommendation, second by Mr. Bush, and that is to accept the preliminary, move it forward to the preliminary plan stage. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Your fitness center's coming.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Okay, that concludes.
Statement. If I'd known I was going to live this long, I would have taken better care of myself.
Isn't that the truth? Okay, we're finished the public hearings. Our next project is preliminary plan approval for Hang 10 Car Wash.
Yes, this is a request for preliminary plan approval. The project is Hang 10 Car Wash. The file number is 2212-392. The developer is Eco Studs LLC. The engineer is Monte Verde Engineering and Design. It's located in the Falling Waters District, Map 14, Parcel 8.6. The project is located at the northeast corner of Williamsport Pike and the southern entrance to Walmart, south of Hammond's Mill Road. The project proposes a car wash on 1.23 acres to be served by public water and sewer. No waivers or exceptions have been requested. On January 29th, 2024, County Engineer Doug Smith deemed the above-mentioned project compliant with the subdivision ordinance 2009. The preliminary plan meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance, therefore staff recommends approval of the preliminary plan.
Thank you. Do we have anyone to represent the Hang 10 Car Wash?
Seth Roderick with Monte Verde Engineering and Design Studio, representing the applicant.
Planning commission members, do you have questions of Mr. Roderick or of the staff?
Maybe a statement that in recent debolting, the water is kind of hard here in our county, so treatment would probably be highly recommended.
The water is heavily conditioned before going on a vehicle, spots are a no-no. Understood, and thank you.
Yeah, just wanted to.
Yeah, the other locations that have started so far are in Frederick County and then down in my neighborhood, Rockingham County, so the water is quite hard there as well.
Times you don't know whether to drink it or chew it.
That's right, that's right. Thank you.
Any further questions or comments? If not, ready for a motion.
I will make a motion that we accept staff recommendations for approval of preliminary plan.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Lewis, second by Mr. Whitaker, to accept staff recommendation, and that is to, uh, grant preliminary final plat, preliminary final, preliminary plan, sorry. Any questions? Any questions now that I've got that out? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you. All right, the next project is Dollar General Potomac Station.
Yes, this is a request for preliminary final plat approval. The project is Dollar General Potomac Station. The file number is 2401-022 tied to 2310-324. The developer is Wall Street Partners, WV2 LLC. The surveyor is, or, excuse me, the engineer is the Thrasher Group. It's located in the Falling Waters District, map 14, parcel 3. The property is located on Hammond's Mill Road, approximately 0.2 miles northwest of its intersection with the Interstate 81 Southbound interchange. This project proposes the creation of one 1.15 acre commercial lot to be served by public water and sewer. On July 10th, 2024, county engineer Doug Smith deemed the project compliant with the subdivision ordinance 2009. The project is compliant with the subdivision ordinance, therefore staff recommends approval of the preliminary final plat.
Okay, do we have anyone here to represent the project?
Brad Messenger with Thrasher.
Thank you. Planning commission members, how about you? Do you have questions of Mr. Messenger or of the staff?
I'm just more curious than anything else about the, the decision to have the entrance onto 901 instead of coming back anagram and then coming out to that signal.
There's going to be an entrance on anagram and 901.
I see, okay. And obviously, no improvements or anything required for the entrance onto 901?
No. It's going to be a right in, right out.
I, I see, okay, that's helpful. All right, thank you.
Additional questions, please? If not, can I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve preliminary final plat.
I have a motion by Mr. Bush.
Second.
Second by Mr. Whitaker, and that is to approve the preliminary final, yeah, preliminary final plat for Dollar General Potomac Station. Any further questions? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. So you can get your fitness done, you can get your car washed, and you can go to Dollar General, right in the same quadrant. Anything, staff, do you have anything you want to talk about?
Not this time.
Not this time? How about you, Mr. Smith? Mr. Delagati? Okay, I don't have a motion to adjourn, so somebody's going to have to do it.
They're moved.
Motion by Mr. Whitaker to adjourn at 6:33. Second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Lewis. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?